I am Carol from Merrill Worth. I am the city councillor representing District 2 in Santa Fe. I have, I'm in the middle of my second term, so I'm about six years in. And I serve on a number of committees. I chair the Finance Committee. The city has three, what we call, standing committees of the city council. The Finance Committee, the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, and the Quality of Life Committee. I chair the Finance Committee. I sit as a member on the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, which is chaired by Councillor Amanda Chavez. And then the third committee is the Quality of Life Committee, which is chaired by Councillor Jamie Cassidy. And I used to chair that committee until I got moved over to chair Finance. I am the chair of something called the Community Development Commission, which is a group of community members who help decide how to grant our Affordable Housing Trust Fund money and our CBDG money. That's federal money that helps in the housing area. And the group is members of the community who are appointed by the mayor to serve on that group. I also chair the Water Conservation Committee. Similar deal, made up of community members appointed by the mayor. And we work on the city's water conservation policy. I also chair something called the Buckman Direct Diversion Project. Have you all heard of that? We call it BDD. It is the city and county facility on the south part of town that pools water from the Rio Grande and is part of the city's water supply. One of four different ways that we get water in the city. And that water represents our share of something called San Juan Chamo water, which is basically Colorado River water that's piped through the mountains down the Rio Grande, and we pull it out with the Buckman Direct Diversion. And the city, the county, and Los Campanas share in that water. We go back and forth every year with city councillor chairs and a county commissioner. And this year, I'm serving my second year as, my second time as chair of that group. And it's two county commissioners, two city councillors, and a community member. So that's an interesting board, to say the least.[170.01][170.01][laughter] A little history about me. I have degrees from Colorado College in Colorado Springs, Colorado. My bachelor's degree is in political science. I also have a master's degree from the Lyndon Johnson School of Public Affairs at the University of Texas in public affairs slash public policy, not public administration. And I have a lottery from the University of New Mexico. My husband and I, Peter Wirth, who I'm sure you all know, was a state senator for the last 20 years. Serves as Senate Majority Leader. And he and I have a small law practice, and that's downtown. We have a couple of things, I guess, just a little bit more about my background. My mother grew up in Bora, New Mexico, which I'm not sure where I am.[231.31][231.31][laughter] Over that way, across the foothills. A little disoriented here. And she, when she was college age, had a full ride scholarship to attend Moretta Heights in Denver. All Catholic, all women. My grandmother thought she would be safe.[251.06][251.06][laughter] Turns out, she met my father at Regis. At that time, all men, all Catholic. Still in existence, Moretta Heights is not. And so I, as a result, I grew up in the Colorado area. Went to college at Colorado College. Peter and I moved to Santa Fe after we met working on his uncle's US Senate campaign. His uncle was a US Congressman in the Colorado area and ran for the United States Senate in roughly 1986, 1987, somewhere in there. Peter and I met there. And after he won that seat, he and I moved to Santa Fe, where we have, he has deep roots in this community. I have deep roots in the state. And we raised two children here. So they are now grown, out in the world doing productive things. Peter and I became grandparents three weeks ago.[310.89][310.89][laughter] Very exciting for us. So just anyway, a little bit about who we are. And we've been in this community a long time and served in various capacities on nonprofit boards, working in our kids' schools, in public service as elected officials. So a lot of history and, of course, generational history as well on both sides. So anyway, that's that. Talitha asked me to talk to you about what I consider to be the three biggest issues in Santa Fe. Have to say, I thought about that for a while because there are so many issues in Santa Fe. It's almost hard to pick three. And my first inclination, my sort of knee-jerk reaction was housing, housing, housing. As I think about that, I think I'd probably say also housing, crime, homelessness. I could also say housing, crime, climate change. And all of those things, though, come back to housing. You know, they all touch housing in some way. A lot of the work we do on the Water Conservation Committee is about how we build housing to face a more uncertain future and deal with the challenges of climate change and become more resilient. So there's a housing piece there. Homelessness, there's a housing piece. Generally speaking, we need more affordable housing in this community. We are seeing that the people who work in this community can't afford to live here. We're seeing elderly people can't afford to live here. We are seeing other demographic groups, whether they're young, people of color, longtime residents, short-time residents, not being able to afford to live here. And so that's very concerning because, you know, we want our teachers, our nurses, our bankers, our grocery store workers to be able to live close to where they work. So we spend a lot of time working on these issues. So what are we doing? We're doing quite a bit of things. On the homelessness front, I want to talk about a couple of different things you may or may not be familiar with. We are part of a national organization called Built for Zero. And what that, Built for Zero, they are, we've been working with them for about six years. We started before the pandemic. We had a little hiccup with the pandemic, like many organizations did. And we're now really getting that way, getting that work underway in a much more, I think, productive way. I would encourage you, if you're interested about city government, we have a city YouTube channel where you can see committee meetings, governing body meetings, other organizational meetings across the city, whether they're, I don't think the Water Conservation Committee's meetings are streamed on the YouTube channel, but many other committees are. And I would encourage you to look at the Quality of Life Committee meeting on July 3rd. They did a deep dive into what we're doing around Built for Zero. Built for Zero is a way of getting to what they call functional zero in homelessness. And how they do that is they are working to bring all of the nonprofits and the resources we have in the community together, get them to collaborate, get them out of their silos, and develop a binding list of the homeless people who are in this community. And then begin to address their individualized issues with the nonprofit and community resources that we have help target those things. And we believe that there are, it depends what report you read, something like 450, 700, or more homeless people in this community. So the experts say that is a number that we can address if we target it in the right ways. So it's not out of hand yet. And we are doing a number of things that I think will help. So Built for Zero is one of those things. You may also be aware of what we call the Safe Outdoor Spaces Program. That's the pallet shelters that the city has purchased. We have a contract to buy about 100. I think we've purchased about 25. There'll be money coming through the governing body towards the end of the month, I believe, that will help us buy another tranche of those pallet shelters under the contract. Your neighbors are getting, forgetting where I am. Your, the church up the street, just up the street from you, has the first set of those. They have 11 pallet shelters, and they have wraparound services. And they are heavily supported by the members of that congregation. We are looking to do more of that, whether it's city-owned land or other church communities that are interested in helping. So it's a pilot project. It is expensive, but it is, I think, we are finding that congregate shelters, like Pete's Place, people don't like them. They're not necessarily helpful in actually dealing with people's problems and getting them to more stable shelter situations. So we're trying some other things. Safe outdoor spaces, the pallet homes. We have also been converting motels for use as shelter. Santa Fe Suites was the first example of that. We are in the process of converting the Lamp lighter. It's caught up in a little bureaucracy. I keep asking about it. I'm not sure when that's going to shake loose. But that is a second hotel motel that is being utilized to help shelter folks. We had, of course, Conzuelo's Place. And that is the shelter that is at Midtown that was built, or stood up, or started during the pandemic to help provide more shelter and get people more spaced out. So a big fear that COVID was going to break out in that demographic, and it would be really horrible. And so Conzuelo's Place has continued. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund money has supported that shelter. And I think it's going to, as Midtown builds out, it's going to need to find another location, which is another longer-term issue about what we're doing with that facility and that program if we decide it's still needed and placeable. So that's homelessness. On affordable housing, there are a number of things going on. We're looking, we have a report on city-owned land that could be used to incentivize affordable housing. There it is. The report identifies 10 different locations across the city in all the council districts. Some of those spots may be appropriate for the Safe Outdoor Spaces, for the pallet shelters, and some may be things that we can use to build housing. We also have the Midtown, of course. I like to say it's our biggest and best opportunity for housing. We should have density there. We should be tight there. We should have vibrancy there. The current plan suggests that there are about 1,100 housing units that could be built there. The plan says 30% of those as a floor needs to be affordable. So that's, I don't know, 350, I think? 330, something like that? So that is, moving forward, there are, you know, I, I don't know, you know, how familiar you are with the rail yard, but that has taken 20 years. And it's, you know, I think finally coming into its own is a really vibrant area. I don't know if you've been down there lately, but it's starting to be really happening. And these things take time. And it's frustrating, we, if you're in it, they take so much time. But so that, that's an example of something like Midtown. Midtown's going to be a lot more complicated, I think. We are looking at the horizontal infrastructure and doing the parceling and changing the zoning in that, on that parcel so that we can begin parceling it out for the vertical infrastructure. And doing a bunch of things, like with Greer-Garson Theater, that kind of thing to create some early vibrancy there. Tier content of Phase 3, I believe we have an RFP out. It's in the final phases. And there's some hangup there, too. You've got to love the bureaucracy and the process that's required for all these things. So that's another opportunity. Los Estrellas on the north side, also is an RFP. We'll see what happens there. That's smaller number of units, not a whole bunch. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, city-owned land. We do have a number of things that we're doing around prevention before the Housing Trust Fund. As you know, there was the excise tax. It's now in the courts. Was going to pump money into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It allows us to do a lot of prevention work so that, you know, hopefully we can kind of stop the bleeding on people who become homeless or have housing instability because of affordability issues. So both that money, the CBDG money, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money are always that we can subsidize housing for those who need it. We are, on the crime front, crime connected to housing, not all homeless people commit crimes. Not all homeless people are mentally ill or substance abusers. But we have some in those populations, and they are creating issues. We are, we've had a number of meetings around crime. Four councillors and I met with our police chief about the crime that we're seeing along the Cereus Road area. I have met with the police chief, the tourism director, and another city councillor around the plaza issues. We recently had a meeting with small business owners in the Santa Fe Chamber of Commerce around small businesses and the crime that they're experiencing. And we had state, we had the county sheriff there, our chief for the city of Santa Fe, and we had state authorities there as well. So there are conversations going on about how we address that. Some of it is, the state has a new tool, a new software program, and a fairly new law, I think, that allows, rather than, so if somebody goes in and shoplifts, it's basically a misdemeanor. But there, the state law now allows, within a certain period of time, to aggregate multiple instances created by the same people. And so they can up the charges to a felony, but they have to have reporting. And so there's a new reporting software that business owners can report their incidences. So if somebody has just, you know, shoplifted in your store, and you've got a picture of them, and you know what they took and how much it is, you can upload all of the film, the whatever information you have, the police report, and it allows them to aggregate, look for commonality and aggregate, and try to address some of this kind of repeated crime. And so I think that's a tool that is being, I don't know how long it's been around, but it was certainly new to this community when this meeting was held with the Chamber of Commerce and small businesses the end of June. So I think that's a good solution. We've talked to business owners about cameras and how those work in terms of both finding out who's creating the issues and maybe even deterring. We had a, the owner of Cronzo's came and spoke at a petitions-for-the-floor segment of our city council meeting, very upset about what was happening to his business. And as a result of his speaking up in that forum, our police department met with him to discuss how he was using his cameras. And I think, you know, we need to do more of that kind of counselling or consulting to help people understand what they can do to defend themselves. For the downtown area, we are about to approve money for private security to help enhance the police department. We are continuing to try to fill vacancies in the police department. We have been offering incentives for what we call lateral hires because they are very valuable. If you are a police officer or somewhere else and you're looking to move, we offer a signing bonus and then a retention bonus if you stay for a year. And you also get increased leave by when you sign on. And we have been successful in pulling police from other places and coming over. And the great thing about that is that they can hit the streets right away. They've already been through the police academy. When we hire cadets brand new, we have to send them first to the police academy. And there's a, there's a time delay in getting them out on the streets. So lateral hires are very valuable to us. We are doing more also with retention and recruitment. The police department will tell you that policing is a profession that we need to encourage people to go into. There isn't a lot of folks interested in becoming police officers for a whole variety of reasons, as you can imagine. And so there's a lot of work being done around recruitment, retention, trying to build a pipeline of people interested in this profession. And we do that a variety of ways. So really working to help keep our police force up. We also did what's called a classification and compensation study, where we looked at how we pay not just police officers, but firefighters, our ASME union, which is the city union, and just generally across city government, how do we compete in the market? And we found that we were below market rate. And we prioritized in this budget, beginning to implement the classification and compensation study. And so that is raising the salaries of police, fire, and city employees more generally. And we'll need to do the kind of the second half of that next fiscal year. It's going to be expensive. It was already expensive. And it's, I think, going to be very challenging. We have continued to raise salaries for city employees, whether even if they're police or otherwise. And again, just trying to keep ourselves competitive in the market. So lots of things going on there. I tell people all the time, if you have issues, please report them. If you've experienced things in the community, you know, people say, oh, nobody ever comes, they never, they don't respond timely. There is a hierarchy of how they respond to calls. You know, I get people who call about noise, or people who call about, I don't know, things that aren't like threats to life and property. And so, but are still concerning. So definitely make sure you call the non-emergency number, report what you're seeing, because our resources are deployed to where we have problems. And we look at where we have problems based on data. And so your call, your reporting helps the police department understand, you know, if there's a rash of shoplifting in a particular area, or car break-ins, or whatever it is. They look at that data to figure out how to use the force they have across the community. So just super important. We're doing a lot of, just on the climate front. We are, we do have programs that help people, you know, prepare their homes so that they are, in terms of fire, that, you know, they do things for fire prevention. I encourage you to take advantage of those if you live in a wooded area. You know, things like getting your fire, your stack of firewall wood for the fireplace, getting away from house, you know, they do things, there are recommendations like that. We are about, we have a five-year water conservation plan. It's almost run its five years, and we're looking at renewing how we do water conservation in this community. We also are into the planning for 40- and 80-year water planning to help us understand how to be more resilient and what kinds of things we need to be doing to make sure that we can provide water to the community. We have been leaders in building a resilient water system. We have diverse sources of supply. We, this community is very water conservation-minded. And that's been a terrific advantage for us. And I think those are things we're just continuing to try and stay ahead of as we go into tougher times. But, and many communities are looking to see what we have done. And it's interesting how far ahead we are, but we can't stop. We've got to keep pushing out, being smarter, and making sure that we're using that resource the best way that we can. So I probably talked enough.[1519.87][1519.87][laughter] And I think sometimes the most interesting thing is to hear what you all are thinking about and, you know, questions you might have. And if I don't have the answer, don't know the thing off the top of my head, I'm happy to get back to you. So, yeah.
This week in the paper, there's been inserts. Sorry.
Can you please stand so we can hear you?
Okay, sure. This week in the paper, local paper, New Mexico, there's been inserts related to the school, public schools.
And their ratings.
And ratings. And I, my wife is a tutor in one of the schools. And so she sees, she tutors math for elementary kids. But the school looks pretty bad when you look at the ratings. And I don't know whether the city government has any role in trying things that might help. One idea that I had was that perhaps we have a lot of young mothers who are still, should be students, but they also have other responsibilities. And is there any role for the city in childcare program of some sort? Or helping businesses start, you know, support, pocket money? But maybe that's part of the problem is that the distraction of kids and the parents, young parents, and don't, well, one thing that bothered me the most was just attendance. It's not learning, but attendance is horrific. It's like 50% in the, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have a local school board. That's probably squarely in their jurisdiction. That said, we have worked with the schools. And Kate Neville has been the chair of that school board. We have interns. Also have, city councillor Jamie Cassidy has been working on the daycare problem and the infrastructure around, and doing, we did some changes to our code in how private daycare providers, what kinds of things they have to do in order to be safe and compliant with our code, but also making kind of understanding unique challenges with that so that we can incentivize more of that kind of daycare. Because we need, we bottom line need more daycare in the community. So our role, yeah, we have worked and are open to conversations with the school district and about how they address the challenges in the schools. That's not our primary responsibility, but we're certainly open to collaboration. Yeah.
Carol, you mentioned crime, which is, of course, a huge issue. Everybody can read statistics and so forth. And I recall reading, you know, in the Santa Fe, it was a year, maybe two years ago, about how police officers were leaving Santa Fe, going to Albuquerque and other communities. And I'm just wondering if the changes in hands, pay, and leave and so forth has curbed that exodus of police officers.
Yeah, so I think if the police chief were here, and I think this is what he said to the Chamber of Commerce, we're not worse, we're not better, so we're kind of holding the line. And I think we still have 22 vacancies. When I ran six years ago, I think we had that many vacancies. We work really hard. We've done, we also did some work around trying to help first responders with down payment assistance to try to get more of our officers and our paramedics and firefighters and first responder type people to be able to afford to live in this community. Many of them do live in Rio Grande, because it is a less expensive community. And so these are, many of these issues do not have silver And so these are, many of these issues do not have silver bullets, right? So we're, whether it's homelessness, or crime, or affordable housing, or half a billion other things. We have to, we keep trying different things. And what's interesting is sometimes you can't see what you've prevented, right? So, so that's a hard thing to measure. But in this instance, I think at least it's not worse. Would we like it, would we like to be fully staffed? Yes. And, you know, we have vacancies across city government. It's a problem for every single department we have is filling vacancies. And that's part of why the city council, the governing body, so I don't know if, you know, the city council, there's eight city councilors. And it's called the governing body because the mayor also sits on the council, on the dais. And so when we're all together, we're the governing body. And the governing body prioritized, I think we put $8 million in this budget to bring salaries up across city government to try to be competitive. And it's a constant system arms race, you know? So we increase our salaries. Then the legislature comes in and they increase salaries for state police, you know, and the county comes in and they increase salaries. And so we're just constantly in this, you know, having to do more and more. And I think the real struggle for city government is that we don't have growing revenue sources. We are heavily reliant on gross receipts taxes. And about 70% of our general fund budget is gross receipts taxes. We have pretty high gross receipts tax. And we, but it's not, it's, it took a deep dive during the pandemic. It's been coming up as we've kind of climbed out of the pandemic, but it's starting to level off. And I think as we see city government being asked to do more and more things across more and more areas, this, the rubber's going to hit the road here. And I don't, we're going to have to, I don't know, really look at how we're spending money and making sure that we're doing it as efficiently as possible and that we're not, you know, and you want this anyway from government. You know, you don't want waste. You want to make sure that where you're putting dollars, it's actually the best place you could be putting dollars. But salaries, also salaries and benefits is the largest piece of the budget. And we're constantly having to raise them to stay competitive. So it's tricky. Yes?
I find the concept of allowing builders to pay a fee, which to them is buckets in the long run, rather than including low-income housing among their structures. I find that very cynical. And certainly, if you had a new community with diverse salaries, diverse incomes, that's a plus. Or a community with diverse ages, that could be a plus all around. And certainly, I was looking in the paper, a meter condo goes for $460,000. I don't know what kind of down payment a police officer or an EMT or a fire, a fire.
Fire minister.
Fire fighter. I don't know what kind of down payment they would have to come up with. It just, you know, I mean, all, everything in the paper are 2 million, 3 million. And as I said, the lowest I found today was 460,000. If I were moving in, there's no way I could come up with a down payment sufficient, much less a mortgage payment.
Right.
I just find that concept really cynical. And, well, I mean, it's almost like a payoff.
So I think it's misunderstood. It makes a great bumper sticker. You know, developers, they're getting out of something by just paying a fee. And, you know, we villainize them as, you know, not being aligned with our interests. I think that's unfortunate. I think what, what you're talking about is something called Santa Fe Homes Program. We did make changes to that. And the reason I have, I knew you were going to ask about this. And I think, I think that we could spend a whole hour on this trying. And this is something I think as a community, we're going to need to try to help people understand what it is and what it isn't. Because I think there, there is a misunderstanding that developers are being allowed to get away with something just by paying money. And not understanding their financing and what the Santa Fe Homes Program is trying to do to incentivize affordable housing. And it's targeted at rental housing. So part of our problem is we need to be building a spectrum of housing. We need to be building, you know, the pallet shelters. We need to be building affordable. We need to be building workplace housing. We need to be building rental options that are affordable. And this, this program that we, that we made changes to in 2019, the Santa Fe Homes Program, was to address what was a dearth in rental housing building. And it's now, we are in the last year of the increases of what you have to pay. And so it probably is going to be something you're going to be hearing more about. But I think we need to do a better job of helping people understand what developers are being allowed to do and what, what that option has done in terms of building the kind of housing we need. Because it's not, it's not that they're paying money and getting away with something. And prior to this, they weren't building at all. And so there's, and it's funny because I just had a conversation with a group of friends at a book club, friends of mine who, you know, believe that we are, if we got away with that fee and loofah, they would be forced to build. And what we found is they weren't building. And it's not building, it's rental housing that they weren't building. It's a very specific piece of the spectrum of housing we need. So we should, we should do more to help folks understand that.
But also, and also our poor school system may cause first responders of all sorts to not come to Santa Fe.
Yep.
Because, yep, a lot of them will have children, school-aged children. And, right.
Right, another problem too with doctors, right? We've got, we've got to have good schools because the workforce needs good schools for the kids and the employees that we want to have. And we want to be able to afford to have teachers. So this is why, you know, when I was asked, what are the three, three biggest problems in Santa Fe? That's why I say it's housing, 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 right? Because it feeds into all these other things. So you're absolutely right. And we have to keep, keep looking for solutions.
Because in Connecticut, they have a system of magnet schools so that kids who can achieve are, like, middle school on are in magnet schools that they, you know, could, you can't always afford a private school tuition. But the magnet schools, those kids get into Harvard, Yale, blah, 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 with stronger shapes consistently without having, having to have a private school education.
Right. We're diverging often from my, out of my lane. I mean, I do know a little bit about, but I don't think I should be the voice more for educational policy.
So Carol, when it comes to the issue of housing, what role, or any other issue facing the city, what role do you see a faith community?
Yes.
Like United Church of Santa Fe addressing?
Right.
Because I think that's, that would help us as we look to the future of the church in terms of where we need to put our, our resources and where we need to put our energy. We can't be all things all people.
And you have, this community, this congregation has had, has an incredible legacy of, of working in the community. And I think the most recent example of that is, of course, communities and schools, which came, built from a volunteer program that the cooks started many, many years ago.
Right, they were members of this congregation.
They were members of this congregation. And, and that started out as a simple going in the schools and reading to kids. And now it's a, it's a full nonprofit that I think is really important to the school system and helping provide support for that system and enrichment for those kids and helping them to succeed. So there's, so that's certainly, that, that was a, an important and big lift. So I think it depends on your interest and your, and your, and the resources you have. I mentioned one, the pallet homes. How we support those communities that are, that we're going to have more of is going to take a lot of volunteer help. They are expensive to do the wraparound services that help those people get into more stable shelters or stable housing. So that's certainly, we've talked to folks up the street here from you on what they're doing. That may be more than you want to do. But I bet there are roles for you. And I noticed St. Beat's was preparing lunches. They're giving lunches out to folks on the medians. You know, I don't know, kind of trying to discourage people from hanging out on medians. But whether they're, you know, homeless or whether they're selling things or whether they're carrying political signs, it's just a dangerous place to be depending on the size of the median. So, you know, maybe St. Beat's should be helping, you know, provide meals to the pallet, to the safe outdoor spaces, places. I don't know what kind of, you know, how they're dealing with, with the food options in those communities, but there are going to be more of them. So even if you don't want to put a pallet houses on your property here, you might be able to support other churches or become in collaboration with other churches. I also will tell you, there are a lot of things coming forward at the city that are going to ask for community input. I, I encourage you to look for those. I can certainly try to make sure that if you're not signed up for our city newsletter, I encourage you to do that. You can get information to Letha about how you would do that so that you can stay in the know about those opportunities. We are updating our land use code. We are updating our general plan, which is, determines how we use land in the city, where we put things, where we put commercial things, where we put the different aspects of the city land use policy. It's going to be a really big and important thing. We're going to have community engagement around our 40 and 80-year water plans. There's historically been community engagement around the water conservation plan, the five-year water conservation plan. So there are lots of these kinds of things that are going to be coming forward. We do have a five-year affordable housing plan that I think is going out with a public comment. And then it's going to be approved. That actually takes a really deep dive into what we know is happening so that we can better understand the environment in which we're operating and what kinds of things we need to do and how we need to target things like fee and loofah to make sure that we get what, what it is, how we incentivize what it is we want to see and where we want to see it. So all of these things are going to be really important places for you all to be involved either as a group or as individuals, or how you want to see this, this community function and build out.
Maybe you want to do other questions and then?
Sure, that's all right. No, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, my, my question's completely off that.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Sorry, I'm sorry. No, okay. Um, my, you brought up so many good things, everybody. But one of my main concerns is water.
Yep.
It concerns me greatly to know that Santa Fe, amongst other frontline towns, we're not, well, yes, we are, because we're part of the divide, are taking, still taking water out of the Colorado River system. I know we're taking water from the San Juan. I have a place in Chama. I know where that diversion is.
Yep.
And I have an office, the Office for Archaeological Studies, out on Caja del Rio, off Caja del Rio. And every time, in the past 10 years that I've had that office, there has been more and more and more building in that area.
County.
And I, but even the county. I mean, what, and I know the studies haven't done. I've been reading about the water studies. I, but it bothers me greatly to see that going on. And I don't know what, you know, the city of Santa Fe has done about that or is doing about that. But the excessive building and also the people in the county out there aren't building affordable housing. It concerns me, that's all. And I'm, I'm just wondering if there is some kind of communication that is going on and how serious is it and where it's going.
No. So I, so I can't tell the county how to build or not build or how to build affordably. That's their separate jurisdiction and separate elected officials. We are the backup water supply for the county, the city is.
Exactly.
We do work through the Buckman Direct Diversion Board. That Buckman facility is pulling Colorado River water, our share of it. It's a really important water source for the city. How we use that is very important. And we are working, there are lots of agreements about how we maximize that use with the county's sources of supply and our sources of supply. We're also looking at how we, the county doesn't really have a water conservation program. And so what we're trying to do is we have a new tool that helps us understand kind of our seasonal supply. And then what we're, what we're in the process of doing is developing the policy recommendations for how, what, depending on our seasonal level of supply and what, whether we think we're, you know, red, green, yellow, what do we ask of the community in terms of conservation practices, depending on what we see? Like right now, we're having kind of a wet year, but in the grand scheme of things, we're still in drought. So, you know, what do we ask of the, the community? And that does look at the city and the county. And we're hoping that we can, you know, make that apply with everybody. So there are, there is work being done and conversations. And, you know, we can always do more. And we can always build those relationships better. So I don't know. I like to think the glass is half full, I guess. But it's, I, I recognize that we need to be thinking not, not in a silo. And I think, and I, and I actually think that our directors are thinking about how we think broadly and not just around arbitrary boundaries set by governments. Because that's not how the water basin works. And it's also not how the structure of how we supply water works.
Joan, did you have a question? I thought your hand was.
I was just going to ask, how would you counsel individuals to get involved? Like, what's the best way to make an impact for an individual who's concerned about a particular issue?
Yes, and there's a whole variety of ways. You know, we do have, I mentioned a couple of committees, the Water Conservation Committee. We are going to be looking for members on that committee. There are, you know, certain skill sets we look for, like landscapers and, trying to think what else, builders. And, but we also have room on there for people who are just concerned citizens. And so I would look for that opportunity if that's something you're interested in. We have, so, so there's committees. There are, we, lots of times throughout the public engagement just to get feedback on a particular plan, a particular idea. That's certainly a great way. And we really do need people to participate. You know, if I have, I have had and I have constituents who are interested in particular policy areas and. And we work within our capacity to help, you know, if there's a policy change somebody wants to see, we, you know, work with folks to try to see what we can or can't do or how we evaluate what could be done. That maybe takes us in a general direction that a constituent might be interested in. I do a lot of that, actually. So it's, it really depends on your interest and your time and, but those are, those are several ways.
And the entry points for those, are those obvious on the website? Or how does it present itself?
Well, we do a lot of advertising when we, when we look for, I advise you to sign up for the newsletter. Let me, let me get that information.
Sure, not sent that out.
So that you all have that. I think that's one great way, the website. I don't know, I hear different things. I don't use it a lot, but I hear different things about its usefulness. We did just revamp it, so it seems like it should be better. Can it, you know, in this day and age where everything is online, can it be better? Probably. So it's a constant thing needing for improvement. So certainly, you know, you can also call your city councillors. You know, if I want to be involved in water conservation or I want to be involved in whatever, affordable housing, Community Advisory Commission. We just, we just appointed the members to that. But there are, you know, there are veterans, there's bicycle safety, there's, I mean, we have so many community advisory groups. We have a public safety one. So there's, and those do come up very regularly. So I guess it's the other things. Call, call your city councillor and say, hey, you know, can you let me know when they're, I'm interested in this, when there's a vacancy, I'd love to know about it.
Another thing. One last thing, thank you so much, Carol. One last thought. United is a community that is committed to love God, love neighbor, and love creation. It's sort of expanded on the two great landmarks. And we're also a community that from the very beginning has been committed to being what we call a desert faith church, helping people who come from much greener environments than a high desert or northern Mexico or other desert places in the southwest to learn how to live here and to learn to live with the land rather than just being the land. You'll see it by landscaping and all of that. One difference we made early on was that when we started doing even more expansion in the church, and this part of the building was only added about six years ago, we've also then done things to make sure that we have systems. And so we've got four different systems on that property that collect, I think, close to 40,000 gallons, something. Is there any, I mean, in the building that's being done in Santa Fe, whether it's commercial or domestic, is there a way of getting into the city code that one would need to, if you're going to put a roof on something to expand your building, that you also need to put systems in the ground or some way of rain catchment? Is that part of thinking at all?
Yeah, so we have something called, it's WERS, water, beginning of what it stands for. It is a, essentially a budget for new housing. We are, we have soon, I hope, to have a draft for multifamily housing. But for single family housing now, you have a WERS rating that you have to achieve. And we're actually, I think in this new draft, they're going to even lower in terms of your water efficiency rate. It represents your, and maybe that's what it stands for, water efficiency rate, WERS. No, look at that. So when you build new buildings, you have to achieve a water efficiency rate of a certain level, I forget what it is. 60, I can't remember, 68 is where it is or 68 is where they want to take it. But maybe it's 74 now, I forget. But anyway, in there. And they, the nice thing about it, I think, that the builders like is they don't care how you get there. So they don't say you have to do it by systems or washing machines or whatever. Figure out, you know, what the water needs are for whatever it is you're building. And then you figure out how to make them as efficient as possible as long as you hit that number. And we have people who go in and look at it, that's, that's okay. So you can find multiple ways of getting there. We are looking, so the new law that I hope is coming forward soon, the proposal will be to expand that to multifamily housing and to lower the rate for single family housing is what they're proposing. So, yes. And I think, to answer your question also about water, I think, you know, we've done a lot in water conservation. It's been mostly targeted around residential. I think there are a lot more opportunities around, in the commercial sector. And so that is a great way to make our water supply go further. We are also doing something called the Return Flow Pipeline, which is in the permitting stages. And that will be a pipe essentially that is added near the Buckman Facility. And it's going to help double the amount of San Juan Chama water that we can, we don't use all the San Juan Chama water, we're entitled to. And it'll allow us to be able to use more of what we have. And so that's going to help us in terms of being able to supply water to the community. So there are lots of things being looked at and implemented and permitted and, you know, planning because we anticipate that there will be gaps. And how are we going to meet those gaps? And, you know, we want to, we want to be forward thinking. We want to be, kind of continue to be ahead, to be leaders in this area because of, as we point out, where we live.
We live in a desert. Lots of beaches. Thank you so much for...
Thank you all.